Okay, we ready? I'm not hearing feedback, so that's good. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:02. And if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the June 22, 2023 Board of Trustees workshop. You all had a chance to take a look at that. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any revisions, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. I just want to mention, to begin with, that I have a few agenda changes, starting with removing budget adjustments. We're not yet ready to have all the budget adjustments for the year end, so rather than do it piecemeal, we should have all of that together by the August meeting. And then there are four things that I want to add. One is, and you should have these in your packets as well, one is a resolution to add stop-work order fees, one is to surplus the current garbage leaf truck, one is to remove reserve funds, sorry, move reserve funds to reserve accounts, and the last is to authorize the mayor to apply for legislative grant for an electric police car for the SRO. Those are the items that I have to add to, which we will discuss along the way. Any questions or issues? Okay, so moving on. The next item is a particularly exciting item, which is that we have three quotes for a new, we refer to it as a garbage truck, but the garbage truck does both the garbage and the leaf pickup. And we have a quote from, I'm going to pronounce this wrong, Sincon Equipment for a curb tender vac pack side-loading refuse body, which is mounted on a new 2020 International 4400 with warranty. It is available immediately, and the delivered price quoted is $218,000. And then we have two other quotes. One is for $231,500 for the, it's actually for the same truck through a different company. And then the third one is for a new truck, so it's a 2024 truck. However, it is not available to ship until the second quarter of 2024, and that is not, that date is not guaranteed. And that quote is for $252,000, basically. And so I have spoken with our bond counsel about how to finance this truck. And what I am proposing tonight is that we approve a bond resolution for a bond anticipation note, which is a five-year note that would allow us to purchase the truck, it would allow us to get the financing by the end of July, early August. The company has said they can deliver the truck by September 3rd, which would be in plenty of time for the leaves. Our highway foreman Jake Smith is more worried about the leaves than he is about the garbage pickup at this point. And what I, I'm proposing, the five-year ban, bond anticipation note, because there's several other items around the financing that, one is selling the old truck. We will receive some proceeds. Jake, I think, has given me a conservative estimate of somewhere between $10,000 and $30,000, but we won't know that until we actually sell it. We have $26,000 in reserve, and we can also use CHIPS funding. So what I'd like to propose is that we proceed with the five-year bond anticipation note and then plan to refinance sometime in the next six months when we know exactly what the long-term financing will need to be. And that would then be a 15-year, a 15-year bond. There are fees associated with doing two bonds, but those, I think, will be relatively small compared to getting this truck quickly. One of the, there are two, there are several really good things about this truck. First of all, it's new. Second of all, it's smaller than our current garbage truck, which means it'll work better in the village, the village streets. And also the leaf, the connection that has the tube that sucks up the leaves actually reaches out farther, so they'll be able to reach, when people do their piles, they don't always do it right next to the road, and so this will enable them to more easily get the leaves. And the other is that the driver's side is on the, on the right, and so it can be operated, it can be done by one person. You don't need a second person to be watching what's going on. So that will save in, that will save in man-hours, if you will, is a better word for that. But so that is, that and, there should be air conditioning. The current truck we have has, has the, has a motor right behind the cab, and it gets very hot in the summer, so this will be a positive all around. So you have in your packet a bond resolution. And I don't know if I need to read the whole thing, but I will do, I'll read portions of it. "Bond Resolution of the Village of Red Hook, New York, adopted July 10, 2023, authorizing the issuance of bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $218,000." There's a little extra zero in there. "...to finance the acquisition of a garbage/leaf truck, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $218,000, and appropriating said amount for such purchase." It does need to be vote, the vote needs to be by not less than two-thirds of all the members of the Board of Trustees. "You hereby, hereby authorize to issue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $218,000 pursuant to local finance law, Chapter 33-A of the Consolidated Laws of the State of New York." Estimated maximum cost. "Reserve funds or any other available village funds, including proceeds of sale of an existing garbage truck, are authorized to be applied to the cost of said project, and the principal amount of bonds or notes issued shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds appropriated and expended. The period of probable usefulness applicable to the object or purpose for which said $218,000 bonds are authorized to be issued is 15 years pursuant to Section 11.00A28 of the law. However, the bonds authorized pursuant to this resolution and any bond anticipation note issued in anticipation of the sale of said bonds shall mature no later than five years after the date of the original issuance of said bonds." Not to exceed five years. Lots of legal language. Validity of the bonds authorized by this resolution and any notes in anticipation of the sale of said bonds may be contested only if such obligations are authorized for an object or purpose for which the village is not authorized to expend money, or the provisions of law which should be complied with at the date of the publication of such resolution or a summary thereof are not sustainably complied with. And an action suit or proceeding contesting such validity is commenced within 20 days after the date of such publication." I believe that is the period of estoppel. "Or such obligations are authorized in violation of the provisions of the Constitution. This bond resolution shall take effect immediately, and the village clerk is hereby authorized to direct, and directed to publish the foregoing resolution, in summary, together with a notice attached in substantially the form prescribed by Section 81 of the law in the officially designated newspaper for such publication." May I have a motion to adopt this bond resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Charlie. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions? Concerns, issues?
Is there any, I mean, it talks about that we can prepay some of the principal if, you know, you have a salvage value that you receive from the existing truck, as well as any reserve funds which are used. If it turns out that the cost of this bond is much lower than what it would be replaced with, and again, realizing it's only five years, which doesn't go out to the whole term, but is there any prepayment penalty for that?
Yeah.
So, so we could keep this potentially up to that five years if, you know, there's some sense that this might be advantageous for a longer term?
If it could be advantageous for us to keep it for the five years to not pay it off earlier than that, yeah. In order to refinance, we'll go through this again. So we'll have the opportunity to review the, the different options, look at the cost, and see what, what we choose to do in the end.
Yeah, because there's some break-even period with the cost, but...
And obviously, interest rate is, is key.
Yeah, no one has a crystal ball for that.
Exactly. So it could go up, it could go down.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions, comments?
Is the interest rate known? No?
No. We need to authorize this to then go out and, and get the bond. Any other questions? Then I'll do a roll call for the vote. Charlie?
Aye.
Mel Corca?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Thank you very much. I know that our highway, highway foreman is very excited. So the next thing I have...
It's Resolution 33, by the way.
Yeah, I didn't leave my pencil here. The next item is going to be Resolution 34, and this is to declare the current garbage truck, which is a 2006 International 7500 SBA truck, to be surplus. And the resolution that I have is that this truck, that's currently inoperable, noting that the cost to repair this truck, even if it is repairable, will be significant and therefore not worth the investment, whereas the village is planning to purchase a new truck to handle garbage and leaf pickup, whereas the village would like to sell this truck and/or its parts at auction to recoup any money possible now that therefore be it resolved, that the 2006 International 7500 SBA truck be declared surplus and will be put up for auction once a new garbage leaf truck has been purchased and received. Any proceeds from the sale of this truck will go toward reducing the amount to be financed for the purchase of the new garbage leaf truck. That is, that is the resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, second?
Second.
Thank you.
This allows for him to still break into pieces, right?
Yes, that's why I had to sell this truck and/or its parts.
Got it, thank you.
Any, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, the next item is regarding local law C for 2023, to amend the regulations for daycare facilities. As we discussed at our workshop meeting, daycare, daycare facilities are not currently allowed in the general business district. And as we discussed, we know that there's a, there's a lack of enough daycare in the area, and so this law was put together to allow for daycare in the general business district. And actually, we've also included it in the gateway business district, so with this law, daycare would be allowed in every, every part of the village. There are distinctions between residential daycare facility, which is a daycare that's within someone's house, versus a nursery school slash daycare facility, which is a commercial establishment. The, ah, that's what this is, okay. And so, and this, again, as we discussed, that maintains the setbacks in the residential No building less than 30 feet from an adjacent resident, nor shall parking be placed closer to a frontside or rear property line than 25 feet. But it, it, that's just for the residential district. For the other districts, it's the setbacks that are within that zone. And a daycare does require site plan approval from the planning board. The purpose tonight is not to approve this, because this is just presenting it to you so that we can set a public hearing. And so my proposal is that we set the public hearing for our next meeting, which is August So before I go through, no, that's this. We have two things that I'd like to do tonight. One is, one is the Part 1 of the Full Environmental Assessment Form. I suppose I should do that before we do the public hearing. You guys have any questions at this point, at this moment in time? I believe you all have a copy of the Full Environmental Assessment Form, Part 1. This is the same form that we used for the law to amend the animal husbandry, beekeeping and, and keeping of hens. So because it is a zoning change, we only need to go through Part C4. So if you look, Part A, the name of the action or project, adoption of local law C, a local law to amend the regulations for daycare facilities, it's in the Village of Red Hook, and this is a proposed law to amend the village zoning law and reduce regulatory barriers to opening new daycare facilities within the village. The law would explicitly allow daycare facilities in the general business districts and eliminates a special use permit requirement for commercial daycare facilities in the neighborhood mixed-use district. There is currently in the code a separate section on commercial daycare, which is defined as the nursery school slash daycare. So to, to clarify and simplify, part of what's proposed by this new law is to eliminate that separate commercial daycare facility in the NMU, but to, to include the nursery school slash daycare in the NMU. Does that, does that make sense?
It does, question. Did we, are we putting it in the gateway district, too?
We are, yes.
Okay.
I'll add that right there. GB and gateway business. Yes. So getting to the questions. Funding or sponsorship, city council, town board, or village board of trustees, yes. Approval of local law to amend the zoning law is required. County agencies, yes. Referral of local law pursuant to GML 239M. That's a referral to the planning department for the, for the county, and those are the only two government entities required. Coastal resources, is the project site within a coastal area or the waterfront area of a designated inland waterway? No. Is the project site located in a community with an approved local waterfront revitalization program? Yes, we do have one of those. Is the project site within a coastal erosion hazard area? No. Planning and zoning, will administrative or legislative adoption or amendment of a plan, local law, ordinance, rule, or regulation be the only approval which must be granted to enable the proposed action to proceed? And that is yes, because that's all we're doing. And that's where it says, if yes, complete sections C, F, and G. F and G is signature, the signature page in the distribution. Adopted land use plans, do any municipally adopted comprehensive land use plans include the site where the proposed action would be located? Yes. If yes, does the comprehensive plan include specific recommendations for the site where the proposed action would be located? The answer is no. If the site of the proposed action within any local or regional special planning district? Yes. Remediation sites, BOO 177, the, I believe, the current, the current wastewater treatment plant was remediated a long time ago. Is the proposed action located wholly or partially within an area listed in an adopted municipal open space plan or an adopted municipal farmland protection plan? The answer is yes, and that's the Town of New York Community Preservation Plan. C3, is the site of the proposed action located in a municipality with an adopted zoning law or ordinance? Yes. If yes, what is the zoning classification included, including any applicable overlay districts? And so this, I need to add, the gateway business district. Is the permitted, is the use permitted or allowed by a special or conditional use permit? Yes. If, is a zoning change requested as part of the proposed action? Yes. What is the proposed new zoning for the site? Local law proposes to reduce regulatory barriers to opening new daycare businesses. And then C4, existing community services, in what school district is the project site located? Red Hook Central School District. What police or other public protection forces serve the project site? Village Police Department, Dutchess County Sheriff, and New York State Troopers? Which fire protection? New York Red Hook Fire Company. What parks serve the project site? Abraham's Park and Memorial Park. And we are not required to do D or E. There are a couple of, oh, there were, let's see. Oh, no, the other. On page 10 and 11, you'll see that there's some marks that are checked. That happens automatically, and in the program, it's apparently not simple to uncheck them, so those are just ignored, because we're not required to fill those out. And then F is any additional information, which we don't have, and then G is the sponsor. Okay, so we have now reviewed. Any questions or concerns or issues about what we just went through? Now, we have the resolution classifying the action and establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of the proposed local law C of 2023. Whereas a proposed form of a local law entitled a local law to amend the regulations for daycare facilities has been submitted to the Board of Trustees of the Village of New York pursuant to the general municipal law, proposed amendments to the zoning law must be referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for its review and report thereon. A full environmental assessment form dated July 30th, sorry, July 10th, 2023, has been prepared on behalf of the Board. In accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEACRA, the Board is required to determine the classification of the proposed project. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board as follows. The adoption of the local law is a Type 1 action under SEACRA. The mayor is authorized to sign Page 13 of the EAF. The Board is the only involved agency under SEACRA. The Board shall hold a public hearing on August 14, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Village Hall, at this Village Hall, 7467 South Broadway, Red Hook, to hear all interested parties on said proposed local law. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to have notice of said public hearing published in the official newspapers of the village on or before August 4th, which is not less than 10 calendar days prior to the date of said public hearing. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to send a copy of the proposed local law, together with a copy of the EAF, to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for a report and recommendation thereon. The village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to send a copy of the public hearing notice to the clerks of the adjacent municipalities. The village clerk is directed to provide a copy of the proposed local law to the village code enforcement officer and the planning board for review and comment. May I have a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Kim. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Good work. All right. The next item that I mentioned that I'm adding to the agenda is a resolution to add fees relating to stop-work orders to the Building, Planning, and Zoning Department fee schedule. I'll just read the resolution, I believe you have that in your packets. "The Village of Red Hook Building, Planning, and Zoning Department has a fee schedule that does not currently include fees relating to stop-work orders, and whereas a stop-work order is issued when there is a significant violation, and whereas it is standard practice to have fees relating to stop-work orders to disincentivize any construction without the proper permits. Now therefore be it resolved that the following fees be added to the Building, Planning, and Zoning Department fee schedule effective immediately. A fee for lifting a stop-work order of $250, and a fee for violating a stop-work order $500." Just to give you a little context, the Town of Washington, which has the Village of Milbrook in the middle of it, has a $250 fee for lifting a stop-work order. Albany has a stop-work order fine of $300. The Town of Poughkeepsie has a fee to lift stop-work orders ranging from $150 to $300. Just to give you a sense of some of the other places in the broader area. May I have a motion to accept this Resolution 36?
So moved.
Thank you, Charlie. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll let you take, I'll let you pick. Any, any questions?
Yeah. So the fee for violating a stop-work order of $500?
So you've got...
Is that per day?
No, that's per violation.
I know, but if they keep violating the stop-work order?
I guess it depends, I mean, so a stop-work order says you have to stop working. If you violate it, it means you continue to work. So yeah, absolutely. There need, I mean, from my standpoint, there should be a significant penalty to continuing to work when you have a stop-work order.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just don't know if it needs to be clarified that...
Happy to...
...per day, you keep working when you've been told to stop.
Happy to, happy to, fee for violating a stop-work order is 500 per day? I can, I'm happy to add that.
Let's.
Let's, as in yes, let's do that?
Yes.
Okay. You got it. Any other? Well, I, I don't, am I, I'm probably supposed to, well, as amended, we'll do, we'll do the vote as amended. Any other questions, comments?
How do we deliver these stop-work, work orders? It's like a notice that's posted, right, on the...
It's delivered in a variety of ways. I know that it's, it's brought to the, to the worksite.
Okay.
It's usually posted on the door or on the...
Amazing, just, I wouldn't want, yeah. We're going to be giving someone many fines, and we want to make sure they...
The notification needs to be very clear.
Absolutely, yeah, no, that... Yeah, yeah. It's often done in person. It, it is frequently put on the door. We don't have, I mean, we, one of the reasons why we don't have it is we don't have very many, you know, it doesn't happen very often, and we certainly don't want it to start happening. And so...
No.
This is an opportunity to make sure it's clear that it's, it's not okay to work without a permit, for example. Any other questions? So I probably need a motion to amend? No, we're going to vote on the amm... No, we're going to vote on the amended resolution. Charlie?
Aye.
Mel Corca?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also. Okay, thank you. The next item is, this is a resolution to transfer funds, and this is from the 2023 budget, to the reserve funds. So our reserve, so in the, within the budget, we budget as an expense, reserve amounts. At the end of the year, in order to put it into the separate bank accounts, we need to pass a motion, pass a resolution to actually transfer those funds. And so this is to do that. And just a couple of comments. So we've got twenty-five hundred to go into the police vehicle slash equipment reserve fund, twenty-five hundred into the highway reserve fund, twenty-five hundred into the fire reserve fund, twenty-five hundred into the building reserve fund, and twenty-five hundred into the employee benefit accrual reserve fund. The fire reserve fund, we have a capital expense invoice that has been sent to us that we, I need to take all the money out of the account and then bring it back into our, into the general fund to then pay the bill that you all need to approve anyway. So it seemed to make sense just to put them all together in one pot so that when we take it all out, it's all one motion. You can disagree with me at this moment, but that's, that was my plan for that one. And same thought with the highway reserve fund. We put this money into the reserve fund. If we choose, whatever amount we choose to use for the garbage truck, we'll need to take that out. That will require a motion to take it out of the reserve fund. So may I have a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Charlie. Any further questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, and the next item. I have spoken with State Senator Michelle Hinche's district representative, and I had mentioned that we were interested in looking at an electric vehicle for our next police vehicle. And I got notification that we have been approved. I'd given them rough numbers because I don't have the actual numbers yet. And the rough numbers are fifty thousand for the vehicle, fifteen thousand for the, all the police accessories, like the lights and the computer and the radio and the printer and the et cetera, and then fifteen thousand for a doc, for a charging station. I'm hoping I'm not too far off. But, so we have been accepted for that grant. However, it is an application that needs to be filled out. It is also a reimbursable grant, so we will spend the money, which you all will approve at the time. But what I'm asking for tonight is a motion to authorize me to apply for this grant. And the, the whole process will probably take about a year to get the money to us, but that would just be short term.
And this is exclusively for SRO use?
So it would, the purpose is that it would be for the SRO, but since the SRO is Monday through Friday on, on school days, it would be available for patrol any other time. So no, it wouldn't be exclusive for SRO.
And what kind of electric vehicle is it?
So in speaking with Lieutenant Hildenbrand, he has been looking into a Tesla, and he's also been looking into a Ford Mustang. And I, and I know that, and he has spoken with the Beacon Chief of Police. They have, they have two in Beacon. And I know that he spoke with, I don't remember which police department, but there is a police, oh, it might be Hillsdale, actually. They had a Tesla till they, until it got totaled.
Who did?
And it wasn't, it actually was, it apparently was not a, was, it was not, the crash itself didn't total it. It was when the fire department wanted to make sure the battery wasn't engaged, that they might have done a little extra damage. So it's not that they crashed the car significantly, there were other issues. But they, they, for all the gory details, the battery in and of itself, you can't hook up the lights to because it's too strong a battery. There is a separate, smaller battery that they can hook up to.
Yeah.
Like, and they, and Sergeant Lieutenant Hildenbrand has confirmed that Tesla also has that battery, and we know that the Mustang does too. So we have a couple of options to get some quotes. So I don't have a resolution. I was just going to have you guys do a motion, if you would be willing to motion to authorize me to apply for the grant. So moved? Oh, sorry. Would you like to second?
Yes, please.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I, I will say that I'm, I'm kind of excited about this one. Few things we got to work out, but that'll be fun. Should make for some good press. Okay, that's it for regular business. Onto department and committee reports, which leads us to our esteemed treasurer.
Can I have a member report from my seat?
You can, if you speak, well, can you hear her if she speaks from there? Where, there's also, there's the handheld mic, right?
I don't want to, I don't want to be problematic. I can certainly hear the right thing. I'd like to come in when I do. Just shut it off.
It works. Yes. Okay. The treasurer's report for July twentieth, 2023. So our account balances as of June thirtieth are general fund, one million three hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. Water fund, three hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-five cents. The payroll clearing account has thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Sewer fund, sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. Hardscrabble, eight thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Village green, seven thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Health insurance, six thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. And our petty cash total is sixty dollars and eighty-three cents. Reserve checking balances are as follows. Fire department, five thousand sixty dollars and thirty-four cents. Police, fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents. USDA, one hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Highway, twenty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. Snow reserve, three thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars eighty-nine cents. The tower reserve has seventeen thousand eight hundred and five dollars and forty-six cents. Unemployment, four thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Court reserve, three thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and eleven cents. And office reserve, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. The monthly expenses for June were general fund, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Water funds, thirty-seven thousand seventy-seven dollars and thirteen cents. The payroll clearing account, one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and fourteen cents. And the sewer fund, seven thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Just one quick comment. You'll notice we are flush in the general fund as compared to last month, and that reflects the receipt of our taxes, which were due at the end of June. Thank you. July, they were officially due July third. Oh, my apologies.
Are there, you know, for the tax receipts, a large portion that come in after the due date, or would this be substantially everything that comes in?
Excellent question for the clerk. I don't have any experience with after payments.
Not ER, but typically people pay their taxes on time.
Okay. Motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? We'll take the other of those two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perhaps for the next meeting, we can get, we can, we can get a, a report on tax, tax payments and how we're doing on that. Back to, there we are. Okay. Now we're in a, now it's my turn. So first item that I have is police report. So for the month of June, there were three hundred and eight incidents. One hundred and eighty-nine in the Village of Red Hook, a hundred in the Town of Red Hook, and nineteen in the Village of Tivoli. Of those, there were ninety-eight water tower security checks, ninety-six uniform traffic tickets, forty-three in the Village of Red Hook, thirty-two in the Town of Red Hook, and twenty-one in the Town of, the Village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were four in the Village of Red Hook, none in the Town of Red Hook, and five in the Village of Tivoli. And there were twelve arrests, five in the Village of Red Hook, and seven in the Town of Red Hook. I have the fire incident report for the month of June. Within the village, there were a total of twenty-three incidents. Of that twenty-three, fifteen fall in the category of an EMS call, rescue, medical assist. Five were alarm, smoke alarm, false alarm. And there were two good intent calls, smoke scare, and there was one hazardous condition or power line down. There were a total of forty-eight incidents outside of the village, and it, it falls in the same pattern, with the majority being the EMS rescue, medical assist type call, and the second largest being alarms of some sort. So that's the fire report. I will now do the sewer project report. As you know, substantial completion was achieved on March thirtieth. We are still working on the restoration and punch list. A walkthrough of the project was conducted on June twenty-eighth by Nathan Roberts of CT Mail, the project engineer, and Eric Klefbach of Carver Construction. The purpose of this site visit was to review items from the May fifth punch list and review progress of final restoration, such as grass growth and pavement condition. Many of the items from May fifth punch list have been satisfactorily collect, corrected. And then there is a list of the punch list as of June twenty-eighth. The electrical contract, there is a propane tank at the wastewater treatment plant site that needs to schedule a startup and training, and there's a roof on the control panel structure that needs to be installed. Under the general contract, there is a final inspection of each of the items to, Carver is to provide a letter standing they have performed that final inspection. There's, there's one step pump that is required. All the other spare parts have been delivered. They need to give us our O and M manuals, which is operation and maintenance manuals. They need to provide us with our record drawings or as-bills. And a requirement of the contract is to take photographs before and after, and so we, that is still outstanding. And then there are a number of items that are for specific addresses that will be included in the, in the report. And then there's some paving that needs to be redone. And I will say that if anybody has any concerns or issues, please send that in. Send me an email, call Village Hall, let us know now, because we are in the very final stages of this punch list. I will also add that the highway department is doing a phenomenal job of absorbing the operations of a brand-new system. And I know, I am very grateful to the whole team led by Jake Smith. The highway department monthly report. The garbage truck remains out of service. The highway department is using other equipment to collect the garbage, which does take longer than usual. So just another note to, to, don't, don't take your garbage bags back in too soon. And as you, as you heard, we have quotes and have just approved a resolution for bonding for purchasing that, that truck. Hydrant flushing was completed in the end of, in the, in the end of June. And a reminder that brush pickup is the first week of every month, and it is once a month. And just reminded that lawn debris and leaves and brush should be in separate piles. Tree branches no larger than six inches in diameter. Brush that includes tree trunks, stumps, garbage, or construction material will not be picked up. And then no revenue was generated from the sale of scrap metal during the month of June. But just to note that since its conception in two thousand seven, forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and six cents has been generated. It's a great program. And then lastly, I have the Red Hook Public Library report. The public library held their regular board meeting on June fifteenth at the library. New library manager Alex Geller started on June fifth. He and the outgoing interim manager were in attendance at the board meeting. The Personnel Committee reported that there are twelve part-time staff members currently considered overstaffed. That number will reduce at the end of the summer due to summer interns completing their internships and other staff planning to depart. The committee is, the Personnel Committee is working on establishing a new full-time assistant manager position. Civil Service is, was reviewing the position at the time of the board meeting. This role will be an assistant to the manager. There will not be a full-time person focused just on programming. Programming, programming will be more decentralized among existing staff. Some programs to be run by outside personnel or partners and joint programming. Just a, an additional side note, that, that job has actually been posted. Toby Teager's time with the library ends at the end of June. The staff is working on standardizing orientation and training. Under board development, it was announced that Board Vice President Sally Dwyer McNulty is resigning, and Board Treasurer Josh Bardfeld is completing his term at the end of this month and will not be renewing. That leaves two upcoming vacant board seats to fill. Anyone interested in being on the library board can contact, you're welcome to contact me, or you're welcome to contact the library, library board as well. The finance report led to a discussion of capital projects that need to be done. On top of the list is repairing the stucco on the outside of the building. Library manager Alex reported that, about upcoming programming. New summer reading project that is not new to other libraries, but is called All Together Now, and it's planned to be implemented this summer. There will be local, community-based prizes at the end. The library has two interns for the summer, one from Marist and one from Bard. It was noted that the library is a hundred and twenty-five years old this year. Further discussions will be had around programs to celebrate, including looking into partnering with historic Red Hook. The board is reviewing options for ways to honor their large bequest. Under consideration is a permanent chessboard outside of the library and a new tree out front. I directed the board of the, to the village's building department to confirm if there are any restrictions around the chessboard idea. Alex and I met to review the joint village and library language access grant from the county on June twenty-second. And that is my report on the library. And there was no meeting for the Northern Dutch Alliance Executive Committee this month. And with that, on to trustee Lang.
So I have the materials management report for the month of June. We collected point eight four tons of combing gold, point four five tons of cardboard, and point six eight tons of paper for a total recycling collection of one point nine seven tons. And at the same time, we collected four point eight eight tons of garbage. And so the costs for that garbage and fuel surcharge ended up being five hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-three cents. And in the month of June, we also collected three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars worth of tags from the tags that were sold here, tags that were sold at the library, and tags that were sold to taste buds. That's, you know, the, the collection volume is down a little bit from the same month in prior years, but we'll, we'll wait and see how, how the year rolls out.
Yeah, the tag, the tag sales are a lot higher, which is interest, an interesting-
I know. I think that's probably a little bit of a blip, and we'll see tag sales reduce a little bit next month.
That's fair.
It'd be nice to think that, you know, garbage volume is going down because people- It'd be nice to think that, you know, garbage volume is going down because people are throwing out less garbage. Possibly.
Well, perhaps we should consider a communication blitz around the garbage program that we have.
Yes. And especially, well, I mean, we should use our acquisition of a fine new garbage truck to trumpet the city, the village's, uh, garbage services.
Well, I forgot to mention that this new garbage truck has the, the thingies that stick out to pick up a, um,
Garbage bin?
A garbage bin.
Oh, a wheelie bin.
And, and pop it in. It doesn't do it all, you have to, they have to manually put the, put the bin on the thing, but then it goes up and, up and over.
Does it need a standard bin or standardized bin?
Uh, it, it's, um, it, it's adjustable. Because I, I asked, can we do, because we had looked at the possibility of the smaller, you know, the thought of having smaller red bins with a nice village logo on it on Monday mornings, we thought was kind of cool. So this becomes something that would be potentially possible.
Right.
With this new truck.
Maybe we should have a sort of naming competition for the village's new garbage truck.
Or, or we could have, um, perhaps an artist competition to,
To paint a mural on the side of the garbage truck?
I mean, why not?
Yeah, I don't know.
Might get people up at 5:00 in the morning on, on Mondays to see the truck go by. Maybe 6:00. All, all manner of new possibilities with a new truck.
We could always have it just play the same tune that the ice cream truck plays. Confuse the kids.
I'm not sure that would be well received. Somehow.
Uh, moving on, I also have the Village of Red Hook Water Treatment Facilities Monthly Report. So during the month of June, the water treatment facility treated 7,442,500 total gallons, which is an average of 248,100 gallons per day. As far as, uh, average usage goes, that's, it's climbing back up, but then again, that's what usage does in the summer. So it's, it's not as high as it was last summer. So I think it's within reason. We also sent off three samples for bacteriological testing, and they all came back clean. No, uh, records for coliform or E. coli. And then during the month of May, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. So that's, uh, comes to an average daily use of 2.4 gallons per day. I'm just looking at the daily volumes and, you know, there are a couple of relatively high days, but no, no real spikes.
That's true. Um, and I can also mention that, that you and I and, and our village engineer, Robert Flores, have been meeting to review the water code. And so we, we just need to take all of the notes and,
Yes.
Put them into a readable document to review, and then we will have that coming forward in the next, by next month.
Been needing updating for a long time.
It has.
Yep.
But we're close. All right. Is that, is that it for you, sir?
That's it for me.
Okay.
There was no meeting of the Sawkill Community, Watershed Community.
Uh, so Deputy Mayor Kiarval.
Uh, the following two reports are being compiled by Mayor Smythe, which she already read, so it's redundant. The Red Hook Library Report and the Highway Report. Red Hook Together did not meet for the month of July. August meeting will be at 5:30 PM on August 3rd at the Red Hook Community Center. It will feature a presentation of Red Hook Responds and the Community Center's Needs Assessment Report, which the Village of Red Hook and various local municipalities contributed funding towards. And if any of you are able to attend, should be interesting, I'm sure.
I would just confirm before you go that that, that that's the subject.
Oh.
I mean, it's the plan.
It's changed? Oh, okay.
No, it's just, uh, I think the date was set before they confirmed with, um, Red Hook Responds. So I would just double check that, that that's happening before.
Okay, I will email everyone if there is a, if I find a different.
Thank you.
Subject. Okay. Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee. Biweekly meetings normally take place at Village Hall on alternating Wednesdays at 8:40 AM. However, due to the availability of members, the committee has been meeting on a more limited basis. The EDC met June 14th, and the next scheduled meeting is July 26th. June's meeting focused on pressing issues facing local business owners. Federal visa laws, unionizing of farm workers, point-of-sale software, and new Visa card fee laws were, were discussed. Also discussed was whether EDC member Emily Sacker would contact a national tourism organization to request they include Red Hook sites in their online printed guide. Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The communications committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 PM in the Village Hall Conference Room. This month's meeting was canceled due to travel and availability. We continue to make progress on the language access grant. The mayor met with the new RHPL manager to explain the project. The village's language line account was verified, and we met with Aperture LLC consultant Adriana Perici to discuss her proposal, and also twice with community member Marta Depepa to further develop and design community input sessions. The Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble Events Committee. The events committee meets on the third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM at Village Hall. Next Neighbor's Night is, was scheduled to be on Friday, July 14th, but since then, we have rescheduled it for August 4th.
4th, yep.
Due to rain. But the rest of this applies in Abrams Park from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, as not to conflict the 6:00 PM Friday night concerts hosted by Todd Baywright in the Village Center. Red Hook Responds has prepared a variety of picnic-themed bites. Bring your own blanket or chairs if you wish. Preparations for this year's Hardscrabble, taking place September 23rd to 2023, are ongoing. If you would like to sponsor a picnic table, volunteer for an event, or sign up for a booth on Hardscrabble Day, please contact us by email at events@redhooknyvillage.org.
And just to go back to Neighbor's Night, um, as we know, there's not a lot of parking around Abraham's Park. You'll be able to park in the middle school parking lot on, on Lyndon Ave, and we will have a golf cart that will, that will happily deliver you to the, to the park.
And the Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in the Village Hall Conference Room. Preparations for the exhibit We Are Neighbors are underway. The portraits have been printed, they arrived today. And the pop-up exhibit will be unveiled during, and this has to be corrected as well, the August 4th Neighbor's Night. And that's it for me.
Super. Trustee Bradley Reigert.
All right. So the Village Green Committee. There are no Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of June, and part of the role of the Village Green Committee is to promote access to the green spaces in our village, and part of that is fulfilling bench request donations. And we've currently been in conversation with the VFW about adding a couple of benches to Memorial Park. They have been given an estimated quote and are discussing it among themselves. It'll make Memorial, Memorial Park a more of a place of respite and provide more places to sit in respect with the memorial. And residents and businesses who are interested in having any trees planted in their adjacent village street or New York State Highway right-of-ways, volunteering for Plant Days or sponsoring a VGC beautification project may contact David Pearson, or myself, or the clerk Jen Kavanaugh. And then for the sewer report, in the beginning of June, Village of Red Hook, um, the mayor and myself met with C3ND and went on a tour of the water waste treatment plant to get a hands-on explanation of how the new system is operating, what is important for continued work on the sewer project, and to discuss the general maintenance, upkeep, and operations of the system. There are still a few items on the checklist needing to be completed prior to a full completion of the sewer project. The village has asked for an update of the status of the generator electrical box, as the mayor discussed. And the wastewater treatment plant is operating as normal with a discussion of future servicing to the existing plant previously known as the Red Hook Commons. And there was a discussion about renaming the two plants just for ease of identification.
Maybe that's where we need our naming contest.
As the new plant is up and running, we have officially completed a full month of regulations, and reports show that some items will be tested daily while other occur monthly. As per the village's tour with C3ND, the recent reports generated that the general usage is slightly elevated than expected. However, when combined with both plants, we are well within our estimated range. Secondly, all levels were at the lowest detectable or non-detectable range. And at the time of these notes were written, the monthly report, um, is with Red Hook Commons being a use of 12,000 gallons per day, and the new plant being 40,000 gallons per day, and that would be for the month of May. We are still waiting for June's report. And then for the village, um, for the speed limit initiative that I'm working on, we've reached out to an engineer to get a quote on traffic studies, who suggested reaching out to the Duchess County Transportation Commission to see if they have existing, uh, reports and studies on the areas that we are looking at, um, studying. And as been suggested, we're also going to reach out to Department of Transportation to see about those existing studies. The proposed traffic study will cover at least one to two streets per quadrant, focusing on the high-traffic roads and neighborhoods in the Village of Red Hook. And we're taking consideration from the existing traffic studies to inform areas of interest and what would be best for the village businesses and residents. And that is the end of my reports.
Can I ask you a question?
You may.
The, um, renaming the plants, would you be renaming the, just one, or they're combined now as a new one?
Well, they're, they're not.
They're separate, yes.
They're two separate plants.
Okay.
It's more that currently we call one the Red Hook Commons Plan and the other the New Plant. So it could be Plant One and Plant Two.
Got it.
You know, Thing One, Thing Two, perhaps. I don't know. You can put your, what's that? A missed opportunity, yes. So you can put your creative thought, your, your, your creative mind to thinking about what we should name our plants. Okay, with that.
Number two is a little on point, right?
What, Thing One and Thing Two?
Or number one and number two.
Sorry, I missed that joke.
Sorry for the pie humor.
We can tell who has the youngest children in this. Moving on, trustee Appen Seller.
Okay, for the Red Hook Building Department, uh, the activity was as follows. There were seven building permits issued, two certificates of occupancy issued, two certificates of compliance, and three municipal searches. There were no orders to remedy, no stop-work orders, no court appearances, and there were 14 fire inspections, um, for the senior housing buildings. There was one complaint for an illuminated signage violation at 49 West Market Street, where there was a rather large neon sign law office that appeared briefly. Planning Board actions on June 8th, there was a meeting which signage was approval granted for 7518 North Broadway, which is a martial arts business. Uh, there was a lot-line alteration application for 35-39 Garden Street, and that was tabled until July 13th, and a public hearing is set for that date. There is a site plan application for 7366 South Broadway, also tabled to the upcoming July 13th meeting. Lot-line alteration application for 7598-7617 North Broadway, also tabled. So the upcoming June 13th meeting this week should be busy. On June 27th, there is a special meeting, uh, for lot-line alteration application, uh, for 75987617, um, that was revisited and tabled, and a public hearing set, as mentioned above, for July 13th. There was no June zoning board of appeals meeting, and applicates for 25 Fifth Street, an interpretation and appeal application requested an adjournment until July 27th. And for the, um, building department, the activity that was mentioned, there was a total of $1,092.70 in fees which were collected. For the Public Spaces Initiative, um, there was a meeting on June 24th that was a recap and kind of looking-forward planning meeting that was held with members who were available. Part of that was recapping the May event, which we talked about at our prior meeting, and some of the findings were having the event inside the community center. Ended up working well. Originally, it was scheduled to be outside, but the weather forced things to be indoors, and feedback from the community center is positive, and they would like to collaborate and have their name attached, be a more prominent partner for the next event. And this would also provide access to A. Bloom and some of the other groups which work as part of the community center, as well as the facilities that they, that they have as well. One of the things looking at public spaces is assessing how many events, what kind of capacity there is both for the group as well as in the community. And joining up with other events like the old Dutch Garden Club Plant Sale, Apple Blossom and Hardscrabble, um, along with possibly having a Fall Pollinator Event. And as far as the pollinator event, which was in May, one thought was maybe moving that to June when more plants are in bloom. Uh, the Public Spaces Initiative also participated successfully in the Historic Red Hook Then and Now event at the Omen Dorf. Uh, there was a table there, which the group had. Um, there was a lot of turnout, it was an excellent event, and there was a lot of complimentary, comments from the folks at Historic Red Hook, um, both in terms of activity being done, as well as the Pollinator Garden, which was established there. And for the summer, there is going to be, uh, probably more, but more informal Public Spaces Initiative events, building on, um, what was done earlier, meeting at members' homes and looking at each other's gardens. And I will volunteer my house and certainly accept all the advice people have how to improve my garden. Fall event, there is a big event being discussed for a pumpkin fair at Abraham's Park. Ash will be reaching out to collaborate and coordinate with the parade and some of the other events which are going to be taking place as part of that. Uh, and members are going to, a little bit later this summer, start reaching out for donations, arranging for food trucks, and inviting other groups who would wish to collaborate. Including possibly Historic Red Hook. Um, that is the end of the Public Spaces Initiative June report.
Okay. On to general business, which I don't have anything, uh, listed under general business. Does anybody have any general business they'd like to discuss? Public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment? And there's nobody waiting to get in. I know we had one attendee for a bit. No executive session this evening. I do need a motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So a reminder that our next meeting is July 27th, which is our workshop meeting, which will be upstairs on the second floor. Is everybody good for that meeting?
I won't be in town, I'm afraid.
We're all going to go with you wherever you're going and have our meeting there, open it to the public. And then our next board meeting is August 14th. And if, uh, will you be back by then?
Yes.
Okay. Final reminder that Neighbor's Night has been moved to August 4th due to the weather forecast. Up for this upcoming Thursday, we will be sending out, um, postcards in the mail. What's that? Well, we can add a cake to a special, a special, I don't know, special cupcake, gluten-free.
Gluten-free, dairy-free.
And everything else, yes. Okay, hearing no more business, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Good meeting.